You've got mail. Welcome everyone to the monthly meeting of Roseville Town Board. Just time you please stand and. Joint meeting reciting pledge allegiance to flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, you got your minutes there in front of you folks. Take a few minutes to review those. Everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for November 10th meeting, 2020.
It's been moved to second to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Question? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Okay, we'll go around the room. Gretchen? Do you have something?
I don't have anything.
Nikki? Scott? Kevin? Uh huh. Clyde? Tony? No, it's this time. Okay. We're gonna go business. Leave an update on the. Depot Street property?
I talked to attorney Jordan Marvel today. He works in Scott Craig's office and he was working on. Um, a purchase agreement for Kevin Lidle since he was the remaining bid. And um, that would also include a non collusion affidavit saying that there was no. Dirty business that took place in that transaction. And that he was going to hold the property and that kind of stuff. So. Yeah, I thought I was gonna have it this afternoon, but I know that since he's kind of an attorney in training, Scott has to review his stuff, so I don't have that yet. So. Should be anytime. And John will just have to come by and sign the letter and it'll be good.
Okay. Have a CARES Act update?
Um, if you look at your fund report, you'll see that we did receive $12,773.95 in CARES Act money. That was a um, reimbursement for what we spent in public safety on the police officers from March to September. Because they wanted you just to make it easier instead of checking through all your receipts and stuff. They wanted you to try to get the bulk of your money that way. I have submitted a second request for the balance of CARES Act, which I don't have that number out here. It's like $10,900. Um, to put towards the heating and cooling. What happens with that $12,000 is it goes straight back into, I left it there for the moment so you could see it. Now it goes straight back into. Police salaries in the general fund. This is the way the State Board of Accounts is having us roll it. Like it's coming into the CARES Act fund, then it's going straight back to your appropriation that you had for public safety and then from there. It's just part of the general fund and if you need to reappropriate it somewhere else, you can. So, which will need some of it for the heating and cooling. But I did submit the second request for the heating and cooling. Um. Andrews provided me with like kind of a receipt. And my response from the Indiana Finance Authority was confirm receipt, thank you. I messaged him back and I was like, do I need to do anything else? And they said, nope, you're fine. So I'm just expecting that money to appear. So. That's what I got this by wire transfer. The bank charged me $20 to wire it, which I didn't know they were gonna do that. That's fine. Um, but yeah, that's where we're at. So we should have all of that. They have offered an additional 10% on what we already got. If we can use it for something safety related, like it has to be. It's kind of specific and I think a lot of clerk treasurers are kind of done at this point. Uh, from what I read today, because you don't have a lot of time. But the money has to be used towards educating the public. About COVID-19 and. Like one guy said, I think we're gonna send everybody in town a couple masks. I mean, like, I think nobody really knows what to do with that. So, I, I guess I'll think about it, but it's like another $2,200. So. I don't know. I'll ask Scott what he thinks too.
Okay. Thank you. We got an update on the well. Service we've been having done. Tony, uh, you got anything to let us know about that?
Um. I was down there when they did the initial camera inspection and it was really nasty. He says there was probably majority of problem and then once they pulled the well inspected it. They found the, the well itself, the pump had pinholes all through it. So between getting the clean, the, the screen cleaned out. And then getting a new pump in it, we should be back up. A lot better than we were before it all went kaput. He says he perceives probably 200 gallons a minute, no problem.
Okay. That's cleaning all that's done?
Yes. All the cleaning's done. All we're doing now is waiting on the pump installation.
Okay.
After it's been approved.
Do you know anything about phosphate installation?
They, the last I heard about it, they contacted state and told them that they were going to be doing. Or when they were gonna be approximately doing it. It should be within the next week or so. Because he said it'd be the first couple weeks in December problem.
Okay.
Was the last I heard.
Alright.
He was having problems getting a hold of him because the guy that was doing it was, had a, a medical emergency came up.
Alright. Do you have a update on the windows for the building?
Well, yes, we do.
Okay.
We uh, kind of decided while we were at it to go ahead and um. Do the Marshall's building also, since they were here, same kind of windows.
Uh huh.
So we have four estimates. From Elite, Midwest Installers, Clearview and Window World. And. I have them here if everybody wants to look at them because now.
We kinda like to know what they are.
No, we put them on a spreadsheet.
Oh.
I did put them on a spreadsheet. Some of them quoted this building and then they had to quote the other building separately. So that's why there's two line item. Some of them were here for both, but.
Is this all basically the same window?
Yeah, double hung windows with the, or one half for screen at the bottom. All tilled out to clean.
The only, the only thing that's different is the windows over at the police station.
Yeah, the police station, they've got two larger windows that.
The other one in the front?
The front and on the side are bigger. They're like 59 inches or so.
But that's all included in this?
Right, yes. The thing is, we, one guy said he'd rather put two double hung and then.
Side by side?
Uh huh. And then the Clearview. Didn't mention anything about that. They're just putting, I guess, a large double hung in there.
Yeah, they told me that the, the, the single double hung, the white one, so they have problems when the, you get a lot of wind. That there's enough flex in it that it'll break the seal and it will allow air to flow in. He said therefore, we, we recommend installing two smaller ones with just a strip between them.
Yeah.
That was the last guy that was here when I was out.
Which one was that?
That was Elite View. They're the fir-, they gave us the first price on Justice Building and then they came back and did that building the other day. Um, there's a, a vast difference in when they can do the work as well. Window World, they're out till May. Um, Elite View in the very beginning said like seven weeks, I think. Is that right Carol? And then. Clearview was maybe. April?
Were they? They were all, you know, they really couldn't give a definite date. They just say when they were having trouble with delivery, which I think everybody is.
Yeah.
Will that, will that affect how we pay?
I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know how we're paying now necessarily. I mean, I think it'd be great to use our COVID money. I just have to, I have some questions on how to like. Reappropriate it and then encumber it like in the next couple weeks. Does that make sense?
It'd have to be encumbered.
Because it has to be encumbered, but I don't. Since it's all within the general fund, I was always led to believe by Melissa Griffin from State Board of Accounts that I didn't. If I wasn't gonna spend the whole general fund, I didn't really need to worry about additional appropriations since I wasn't spending all of it and going over. But now with this CARES Act money, I don't know if that's different. So I'll reach out to her tomorrow and find out.
So what do you, what do you think? Which lump should we take? Looks like it's gonna be next year anyhow.
Yeah. I mean, we could probably pay some down with, you know, CARES Act money.
Right, right, we can.
Once we make a decision.
Andrews is supposed to start on the furnace and AC, I believe, next week.
Next week.
Yes, they've hired some extra help because they're getting pretty far behind and so he's hoping next week.
Some of them said they were haul off old windows, but some of them didn't. So we'll need to clarify that. Um.
I don't think that's a big deal. We got, we got a dumpster out there we can fill them in.
When? So whatever you guys think. I was kinda leaning towards Elite. Because they were, you know, gonna put the two double humps in there and I think that would be better. But the Clearview guy was very thorough too. So I'd say it's between those two. The Midwest installers, they were way out, like June or something.
The Window World people, I didn't, I didn't, really wasn't that impressed with.
No.
Don't feel like he really did anything. I don't think he even measured any windows, did he?
He did not measure. I guess they don't measure until you commit, so.
Which is kind of crazy how when you remind an actor of rights.
Yeah, how do you know how to view it if you don't know what size is?
So, you know, he didn't wanna put in too much time unless we were ready to go. I mean, Natalie's dealt with Elite Windows before.
I, I have. They are a good company. I was impressed with them. I liked them. I didn't have them installed, but they did do windows for me and they're nice windows, so.
Did you recommend Clearview, John? No?
No, I was telling you about ABC down there on Third Street. ABC Building Supply.
Well Carol, you've kinda been in the middle of all this, so I think you need to make your recommendation.
Well, Tony, what, which ones did you think? You talked to the guys too. Which one did you think was?
I think Elite was good.
They seem to be pretty good.
Yeah. And they've done them before, because that's one of the things I asked them if they'd ever change a lump like this. And they said, yeah, we've done these. They suck, but yeah, we've done them.
Yeah, he, he wasn't super excited about them.
Nobody was really excited.
Nobody was really excited about the draw.
No.
I can understand that, the way they're in there.
Yeah. Well, if, if, if we've got the money, I'd say we go for it as long as, you know, we're sure we've got.
Yeah.
Got the money. Elite would be fine with me.
What's their total, Carol?
Their total is.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion here.
I'll second it to go to Elite.
I'll make a motion to accept Elite. Do windows and doors estimate. Have $10,448.91.
Okay, it's been moved to second to accept the bedroom. Elite windows for replacement of the town hall windows and. The police station windows for a total amount of $10,448.91. Question? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Okay, this is the first time that I've walked on that concrete out front.
It's nice, isn't it?
Yeah, very nice. There's no steps to stumble.
I know, it's just. All flat. I'll tell you what, when you're filling cars at the food pantry.
That's a big plus.
Huge plus to have that runway.
Tonight, Steve would go out, Steve, and then he would be right back here. I said, man, Steve, you're so fast. He goes, what's that new concrete?
It is, because you're not like getting stuck on a rock and you're not like hitting rocks and stuff flying out of your car and. It's huge, huge improvement. It's nice when we're unloading and it's, the whole thing's nice and it looks nice out there. So.
Yes.
And when we get our new windows, we'll look even better.
Yes, yes.
And the, I'm sure the Marshall's office will be thrilled about there with those two, won't you?
Yeah, they're pretty bad.
It should help on the heat over there too.
I would think.
The one thing that I did ask them about windows was, they asked about that window unit, what we were gonna do with it. And I said, well, they're talking about central air possibly. And he says, well, these windows don't do well with window units stuck in them. So.
Right.
We will need to address that situation.
Right. Your salary ordinance?
Oh no, I gave it to you guys. I didn't reprint it if you needed. It should be in your pile. Almost January now. Take your pile and throw it in this box I got over here.
So are we gonna, are we gonna get a estimate for the air conditioning from Andrews when they do come over?
I mean, we can get an estimate, but I don't know where it's coming from. It's not coming from anything in this year's budget to get the, to get the air conditioning over that building. So, I mean, that's something we'll have to examine next year. They want to use some public safety money.
I hear that, it'll be fine.
Yeah, I asked Kevin if he would be willing to split season on that. He's didn't necessarily give me a straight answer.
Right, so.
Just wanted to think about it.
Anything else under our old business?
She back from her wedding? Still waiting on the sign?
She's back, but I haven't heard from her. I didn't want to bother.
No, that's fine, I figured.
I'll need to stretch that elastic out. Cuts into my ears.
I'd like, you know.
Own a cup person brought me these and they're kind of child size and they're really nice. And they're in different colors.
Okay, let's move to new business. First thing is the salary ordinance. Everybody had a chance to. Think about that?
I have a question.
Okay.
Our budget for next year, our income. Did it go up?
No, it's the same. We didn't, we didn't, the only thing that's cut for next year is NVH. Our general fund budget is all the same and then, I mean, hopefully our utilities operate at the same level. But no, our general fund stayed at 151. So. It didn't change at all. It's, I think that really they're looking more towards 2022 being more impacted than 2021. Um, except for NVH and NVH just directly ties to gas tax and things like that and people just didn't drive there for a few months. So, that's why NVH is down, which is why we shifted Tony's salary. But we were fine to do that with some of the changes that we made and John gave up a little park budgets and things like that, so.
Well, I have trouble with math. If, if our income didn't go up, then I don't know how our spending will go up.
Well, I, right. I, I know what you're saying.
Makes sense.
But, you know, no math may solve that, I don't know.
Well, we've got, what, a bond paid off and?
Yeah, water utility operating's doing better. Um. The sewer, wastewater funds are fine. They're doing, they're gaining all the time. Um. Yep. I mean, I guess we'll see what our property tax revenue is this month, but, you know, for the most part. We're really not. We're really not in too bad a shape, I guess, is what I'm saying. I thought we would be worse off, but it's not. I don't have any bank statements yet, so this is not reconciled Thunderport, but it is a November Thunderport. Oh, I have the budget in my office if you want to go get it.
Didn't make too many changes.
Where is this? Oh, there it is, center bottom. So, operating.
Yeah.
Is it 77,000?
The what? The sewage? Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said 77, it's.
Water's at about 30?
Water's at almost 30. Water's gaining pretty fast since we paid that big bond off and with the. With the first raise and the second raise and just the cost cutting that we've done, it's gaining pretty fast. I mean, we're getting ready to spend. It was $13,000 to clean the wells and then we'll have to deal with this, so. But it is regenerating fairly quickly. January is a hard month for water utility operating because it's all the entrance renewals and things like that. So that'll hit it a little bit hard next month. But.
And we have to buy a new pump, right?
Yeah.
It appears that way.
It's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
No.
That's the same thing Gary said. Gary was like, it's a lot cheaper than I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, it's not as fixed as what I thought it was gonna be, so. Not after basing the estimates that Fortman's and Lane's gave us with their well cleaning service.
Right, yeah. Cause there any changes you want to make in the ordinance? I've done all the talking about this for about the last three years. I'm not talking this time.
You have.
Yeah.
I didn't have any, no.
If I may make one suggestion. Um, you may consider our water operator. Um, maybe some kind of a raise for Gary. Because he is a really good water operator and we were really fortunate to have him. He is here every day. He's gone above and beyond a lot of times. He's been really helpful throughout town. He's fixed a lot of leaks for residents for cheap. And he's, he's just done a really good job and I, and I know that we've, we're billing that fund back up. But I do think that, um, he's been doing that job the last two years at the same rate. Just something to think about. So, I'll just put that, I'll just put my two cents in on that.
But this is his last year anyway though, right?
No, that's the wa-, that's the wastewater operator.
Wastewater operator, okay.
No, we still have Gary. Hopefully we can keep Gary for a very long time.
Yeah. He's uh, he's younger than our wastewater.
No.
Pup later.
Yeah, Ralph's gonna retire.
Let's hear some figures, people. Told you I did all the talking last three years, alright?
Well, what did, would you consider, uh, how much of a raise on Gary?
That's up to you guys. I'm, I'm just, I'm just putting it from my perspective of the water operator and him being just a really good water operator. That's.
He hasn't asked for one.
No, he's not asked for anything. He has not.
And do we have contract with him?
We do not have a contract with him.
So it's at will?
Yeah, it's at will and he's a, he's just, yeah, he's just a salary employee and, yeah.
And he answers the phone anytime I've got a question or anything comes up.
He does. He's, he's really good to us. I mean, he's done a great job for us. I, yeah.
So can you, can we withstand $1,500? Cause if you gave him a 10% raise, that'd be 130 bucks a month. Cause if you gave him a ten percent raise, that'd be a hundred and thirty bucks a month. That'd put it at a hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Prior to Gary, that's what we were paying Tom. And he was not licensed and he wasn't living up to what he should have been.
No, couldn't pass the test.
Mm-hmm. So, I think we could probably do that.
Well, I'll make a motion. We give him a hundred and thirty dollar a month raise, ten percent.
Ten percent?
Yep.
Can you just go to a flat fifteen? Can we just go to a flat fifteen hundred?
That's what you guys wanna do.
It'd be just easier.
Whatever's easiest.
That's one ten percent.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's thirteen hundred now. Ten percent be a hundred and thirty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Either way.
Be fourteen thirty.
Okay, either way then. Sorry, I wasn't, I thought it was closer to that. I wasn't thinking about the percent.
No, I'll stay with the ten percent.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we're gonna do this line by line then? Oh.
I didn't pay one for my, no, you know what?
He's not using it.
That's right. Got one, saved a piece of paper, saved a tree.
Now, since we didn't have a deputy clerk, what happened to that money?
It's just still in the general fund appropriation. And we actually used that money for the raise to council people. Council people got a raise, and that raise came straight out of general fund. It did not come out of utilities. So, I never hired a deputy, so I have adjusted the budget to account for the council salary now. But I have also left money in there for deputy clerk. Because I am really getting busy. And, you know, I, I, I blame myself in some ways. But I, you know, everybody comes in, they pay their bills, and we chat and things like that. And so, I've, I got a nice little office gig going here, but I do, I am starting to need some help, and so.
Do we know how much we spent on, um, part-time help?
Um, yeah, on the appropriation.
For the year?
We have spent part-time, no, no, not cemetery part-time, general fund part-time. We appropriated three thousand dollars for that. We had a hundred and ninety dollars left at the beginning of the month, so we'll probably use that. He's been helping Tony dig these graves, so.
All right, well, John made a motion to increase the water operator's salary by ten percent.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we moved a second to increase the water operators' salary by ten percent. Question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign? Anybody else you think needs to increase?
If the water operating keeps going, we'll be all right there. We've got enough in the rest of the funds. I'd like to see everybody get a two percent across the board.
Two percent?
Yeah. I, I said if the water keeps going the way it is, it'll take care of itself. I'd like to see everybody get at least two percent across the board.
Everybody?
No? Okay.
What?
Never mind.
Well, that's just me.
That was a stern head shake.
All right, you're not doing any talking down there, okay. Section two, any, any, any additional cost there? Let's hear it. Well? I just tried to solve that.
I think I love fine, except for Gary, cause that's what I'm most like about.
Okay.
Well, you wanna make a motion to that effect?
Okay.
All right.
I make a motion that we accept the budget, except for the increase for the water.
I mean, salary ordinance will not change except for the, okay, that's easier to say. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That's what I thought. Okay, so we moved a second to leave the rest of the salary ordinance, except for section six, as it was for two thousand twenty. Don't you want? Question? All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. Okay. Next thing I've got is Tony alluded to the problem that we have with the present pump at the well that's just been serviced. We have a quote here from the people that's been doing the cleaning for pump replacement. They will provide all necessary equipment, personnel to complete the following scope. Supply and install a new turbine pump. Rebuild the packing gland on the existing head, replace the tailpipe, and run five-step test on well after installation. Price to be, to complete the above scope of work, five thousand seven hundred dollars. When we first had the, uh, started talking about this, to include the pump, it was gonna be quite a bit more than that.
It was.
It's gonna be like eight thousand or something like that, so. The pump, it could be rebuilt, but it's gonna cost almost as much as a new one. So, what's your pleasure?
It sounds reasonable. I'll make a motion that we accept their, hey, that five thousand seven hundred.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
What pump is that, twenty-four?
Three.
Three? That's right, yeah, true. It's the one in the building?
Yes.
The little building? Been moved and seconded to accept the bid from Orkman Company to replace the pump in well three for five thousand seven hundred dollars. Question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Motion carried. Any other new business? Any other new business? Oh, I got something here, I guess. Uh, this building, this part of our building over here, that the food pantry is using, looks a little shoddy over there now that we got brand-new concrete. So, they've got, they've come up with a, uh, putting siding on the front out there, but some guy hung the door.
It's Joe Huxford.
And, uh, he said he could do it all for less than a thousand dollars. Should be less than a thousand dollars, he says. That's, uh, I don't know, he's a school teacher, no wonder I can't read his writing.
You know, I, he came in and he said he was gonna, like, he was kinda half explaining it, and then he was like, I don't know, he came to the pantry.
Looks like it's ten squares of siding.
Yeah.
Uh, some starter strips, some J molding.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, some other stuff. I don't know what that is. Can't read it. About four hundred dollars for material and labor, four hundred dollars or less. Thousand dollars maximum cost to put siding on the front of the building out here and make it look like it's, it's a place of business. That'll, that'll work better if the treads don't sit out there in front, too.
Well, we're coming up with a plan for that.
I hope so, cause I don't like to go out by there and see all that trest.
It's a cardboard issue, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Tony.
Uh, that's also fixing the part of the roof, that whole fascia that goes up.
Yeah, up there and top.
Replacing all of that, too. We're fixing that.
Yeah.
Where we had the leak before.
Right. What's the body wish to do with that?
I'll make a motion to accept it for under a thousand? Or up to a thousand, I guess.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Two seconds, sorry?
Carol.
I do.
Carol.
I got CD, if I don't got it.
We're gonna talk about the cardboard now?
I don't have anything in report on the cardboard right now.
Okay.
Uh, it's been moved a second to accept siding bid from Joe Huxford to side the front of the pantry side of the town hall for up to a thousand dollars, sorry. Question? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Close, same sign? Motion carried. Any other, uh, new business? If not, we'll move to reports.
I kinda have a question. I was just gonna do it during the cemetery report, but.
Well, we're getting ready to do that.
Well, it's knowing that he's wanting to do a two-year contract. I don't know whether we can do that or not. I know he always asks that, and.
Well?
I mean, it's locking it in for two.
For what? For what price?
The same, I'm assuming the same price.
Well, I need to see that in writing.
Yeah, okay. If you can, if you stick him with the same price, we could do it for two years, is that what?
We'd have to vote on it, but.
Okay.
I don't know, there's any restriction for the length of the contract.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I mean, I think we can make contracts for whatever we want.
Mm-hmm.
I know before he was actually gonna drop the price a little bit if we did a contract.
Well, I will, I might do that.
Cause he did mention that last time.
Okay. We'll talk about that, and then.
Uh, water department had one hundred penalties generated. There were nine tags hung. Three accounts come and paid in full. One account paid fifty percent, and three accounts are making payment arrangements. There was one shut off, and it's still off. And one of the tags made no contact.
Yeah, yeah.
Are, is there someone living there?
Uh, it's at that house there. She was currently not at the residence. She has returned to the residence.
Where was she?
Gone.
She was locked up, so.
Oh, that little.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
We'll deal with that this week. She had a little vacay.
She had a little vacation at the county hotel?
The one I shut off is an empty house, though.
Okay.
And I was informed yesterday that we might as well kind of write a letter on.
Oh, wow.
Uh, so, any problems with the water, do you know of, Tony?
No.
Haven't had any leaks for a while? Uh.
They did, did I, did I tell you about the well down there? When they flow tested it?
Uh-uh.
They had flow tested about two hundred gallons a minute.
It did? I didn't know it, it could put out that.
Well, Kevin says it does about, well, half what it used to. Well, you talk about the south pump house? Yeah, that, it doesn't even, for us to try to fill the tanker, which we don't have a five-inch fill anymore, but the five-inch hose, you could almost squeeze it off. Squeeze it off, I mean.
But can't get it, shut it off?
Yeah, almost. But yeah, when he, when they flow tested it, it's putting out right at two hundred gallons a minute. And he said if it slowed down half what it used to, he said this thing produces four hundred gallons a minute.
Wonder why we ever went away from that?
They sure never took that out of service, cause it didn't even touch.
Well, the only thing about it was it, it, uh, wasn't filtered or anything.
Yeah.
That was the only problem down there. There, there was chlorine available, cause that's what the other side of the building is, is a chlorine injection. But there wasn't any filter possible. So.
As much as I've been using it, it's been running crystal clear.
We can't do anything with that right away.
But it's, it's running two hundred gallons a minute right now. Push it for three thousand gallon tank, that's about right, for two minutes.
Do you have any idea of any issues with the wastewater?
No.
Okay, we'll go, that takes care of the water and sewer department then. Uh, street department? Hello?
We got asphalt patches, I don't know. This last place was pretty.
Um, they had a request to patch the holes, um, by the gentleman that bought the house at the end of Park Street.
It's been done.
In front of his driveway?
Yeah.
Oh, you've already done that?
The wall was left on the truck, Cliff and I the other day after.
Okay.
Getting stuff done.
On Park Street?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I saw that that been filled up.
Yep.
We used what was left on the truck.
Did you get all the alleys trimmed up? Okay.
There was, unless you get more.
Yeah, our neighbor. That rose to Sharon or whatever the hell that bush is.
I didn't touch that bush.
Huh?
I didn't touch that bush.
Uh, touched that bush. I'm getting tired of scraping my truck when I drive down that alley. I don't wanna run into Barbara's fence.
I wouldn't wanna run into Barbara's fence either. She did paint it. Tony, you might check down by Sharon Hart's house. She had a concern about a bush kinda blocking the road or a tree. And I cannot remember what she said. It's been a while back.
Well, that pine tree, I cut a bunch out of it.
Okay. It might have been the pine tree.
I mean, if it's been recent, I don't know. Cause I drove back, I drove down through it and cut it all out and turned, came back the other way to see.
Okay.
Cause it wasn't.
Is that alley beside her house?
Yeah.
Good and clear?
I cut a bunch off those. I cut a bunch off those pine trees.
No other issues with the street? You got? Sand if you need it?
We've got some, but they haven't really started making any. And we kinda need to get that out of there before we put new stuff in it.
Yeah, cause that sand's no good.
Well, if you got someplace to put that sand, put it. I don't know where it'd be.
I can put it down there and. In the tree or behind the water plant.
Yeah, cause this, that pile out there needs to be. Done away with.
I stirred it up. I mean, all the stuff that was in the top half of it's all in the bottom now.
Yeah. Well, the county will be bringing some, right?
Oh, I just call them.
Okay.
But like I say, they.
We never know when that's gonna happen.
Well, that's.
Okay, park department?
So the girl's back from the wedding, but no sign yet, so.
No sign.
No sign.
Okay, fire department?
Um. One structure fire assist neck up. And four med runs for a total of five. And I guess we.
No breakfast this month. Uh, we gotta follow the state guidelines, so no gatherings over twenty-five people, so.
And no drive-through either?
No drive-through. The last drive-through just didn't turn out very well. I just think people's. People wanna, people wanna come in and sit down and we just can't do that right now. So.
It's gonna be kinda cold if you stand in that.
It'll have to be pretty cold at, you know, six o'clock, six thirty in the morning, standing out there waiting for folks to come in. All the equipment that we ordered. The. Hose, pagers, fittings. I'm missing something.
Boots?
Boots, yeah, that's it. Everything's in. I got Natalie all the invoices.
They're on your bill.
There's one stray out there this morning we had to get straightened out, but she's got all the invoices. So that's, that's all taken care of. Tanker's back and in service. It's back from Texas. It got back two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, it's back and in service.
How many, uh, departments per sip, per. Persons, I can't say the word. Participated in the parade Saturday?
Three.
Just three?
Uh, Lyford and Bridgeton.
Okay.
And then there was a fellow that had an old forty.
Forty-six.
Forty-six or forty-seven Ford that came in from somewhere. I don't know where he got it, but that was.
Well, I saw that old, old truck. I thought, wow.
He, he trucked that in.
It looks like something that we used to have here.
Yeah.
But that was a fifty-three that we had here.
The trucker trailer had Brazil plates on it, so.
I don't know.
Hey Natalie?
How many mid was that? Five?
Five. Five, yes. No, four rounds, five rounds.
Four. Okay. Five total, alright.
It's four hundred dollars.
Cemetery report? Well, I've cluttered in there a hundred.
Okay. Two burials. Um, no. Plot sold. No cremations, just two burials.
Two burials, okay, thank you. Uh. Police report is. Four traffic stops. One accident with a car and an animal. One bleeding hemorrhage. One domestic situation, one gas drive-off. One missing person, one suspicious person. One, uh. Then slash title check and. Two warnings issued. No requests or anything this time?
Yep.
Oh, shoot, I thought I was gonna get by.
Oh, no, this is a big one. So our radios, our portable radios are anywhere from about. Seventeen to twenty years old. They have pretty much re, reached the end of their life cycle. They're pretty much. Two out of the three have been worked on already once a couple of years ago. Uh, I got with Natalie last week and a half or so ago to make sure that what funds we had left in our Lloyd money. I got a quote from Motorola for three brand-new. Uh, portable radios with spare batteries, chargers and collar mics. Um, this includes them programming of them first time. And it also includes a five-year service. That way if we have any issues with them within five years, I'll help take care of that. Initially, the first quote was a little over nine thousand dollars. I called her back and said, hey, can you help us out with that a little bit? And Erin got back with me. She was able to get some sort of a. Incentive. Is what it's listed on here as. For seven hundred and fifty dollars. So the total for the three radios. Is eighty-two hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. And these will keep us online with what the sheriff's department and the other departments in the county are running. And if I have any programming issues, I don't have to go back to them. Sergeant McNeil, I already talked to him. See him assist us with any other programming issues once they do the initial programming.
They happen now.
I haven't found it yet.
Last page, film safety police, they're looking at unencumbered ballots at nine thousand one hundred thirty-two.
What happens if they? I heard the request. What, what do you wanna do?
I'll make a motion that we give them the eight thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars eighty-four cents to spend. Freeze radios.
Hey Natalie.
That's three, three of them?
Yeah, three. Three radios, three spare, it'll come with a battery. It'll be a spare battery and there'll be a charger and a. Call it a public service mic or a collar mic. You wanna talk about the. Steve thing?
Oh, yeah, I'll do that in my, I, on my list, yeah.
That's kinda why Scott's here with me.
Yeah.
There's been a motion made and seconded to allow the police departments to spend. Eighty-two hundred sixty-four, eight, eighty-two hundred eighty-six dollars. And eighty-four cents for new radios and accessories. Three new radios and accessories. Question? Home favor that say aye?
Aye.
There's plenty of money in public safety. Aye, pose, pose same sign? Motion carried.
Uh, on the issue of properties here in town, they had a complaint today on the property on. The corner of Oak and. Middle. It's a continuous issue.
That Benson's?
No, it's not Benson's. It's directly across from Sharon.
Oh, Riddles?
Yes, it's, it's a trash issue. It's like they put their trash out and then it's blowing everywhere and it's just. She's. She hasn't actually complained for a while.
Well, I know I talked to him a few months ago, three months ago about his cars and he hasn't been parking on the street, at least I haven't seen.
Right, he hasn't been doing that. Um, I think somebody just needs to have a conversation with him about the trash issue and just getting it cleaned up. It's not that hard. I mean, they, they need to clean that up. And then I, I don't know what needs to happen. Um. On Main Street with the. The, the continuous complaints about. The look of the vacant lot where Adrian's house used to sit. It's, it's continuous complaints about just junk laying around and. The continued like the trees and the logs and the burning. I mean, I get a complaint on that in this office at least once a week. I've had two so far this week. What is, what's the town council doing about Main Street? What's the town council doing about that lot? What's the town council doing about that mess?
Well, is it, do any of these people wanna make a formal complaint?
Well, they don't wanna make a formal complaint. That's cause of what I say is do you wanna fill out a complaint form? Well, no, I just, I'm just wondering.
Well, you know what?
So. I.
I, I agree. It's not a good situation.
Right.
However.
Right, I, I don't disagree.
If people have a complaint, they need to fill out a complaint.
Right. So, but it, it is, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what needs to happen, but it is continuous. It's something continuously I'm hearing.
It could be straightened up some, I believe that.
Yeah.
And I think. Have a talk with him. It's almost under the, under the nucis.
When he was burned.
Well.
The burning, I think we've, we've, we've squashed that. We've had that conversation two, three times.
Mm-hmm.
We have talked to him about that.
I get, I get. Yeah, he's got the camera on. I'm not talking about it anymore.
So. So that's, I just, I'm just relaying what my office is hearing, so, yep. But if somebody will stop down there and talk to Riddles about the trash and just getting it cleaned up and. That'd be good.
Yeah, I'll probably be out tomorrow morning. I'll see if I can catch him.
Okay.
Can we have him talk to? The coroner of. Central and West Street.
The corner of Central and West. Um, their yard continues to be a problem. I have also had complaints on that.
All, all decorations.
Well, it's got a lot of decorations on one side, it's got a lot of junk on the other.
Look too bad at night.
Right. Um, Kevin, if you'll just, I.
Oh, don't look bad night.
My daughter's getting her braces on in the morning, so I'll be out for a little while. Um, but just get with me tomorrow. I'll kinda give you the lowdown on a couple things. Just call me. I'm gonna be sitting at the dentist's office, so.
Anything else? Kevin, Clyde?
No, the other items that I got, oh, so everything's in. Uh. I am running the sign for two weeks at a time now, since I got the extra batteries. And then I've been, as I change batteries, I'm starting to move it, so it's moving every two weeks. It's down by your, it's down on the south end of town right now. Probably move it again Friday or Saturday, I think.
Okay. Brick treasure report?
Um, last month we talked about Steve Rooks and the fact that he is gonna be retiring. Now we've got COVID restrictions in place, so us planning a big reception for Steve or some kind of a nice party for Steve is just really not possible right now. Uh, his wife's getting ready to have surgery again, or she's having surgery this week and just things like that. I just don't think that he would participate. So. I think, um, I do think as a town, we need to do something to recognize him. I don't, I don't know what that should be. If you guys wanna weigh in on that, that'd be great. Um. What's the fire department plan?
Well, right now, Scott came with me, was. We've talked to Lyford since Steve was on our department, but he's also chair and speaker of both departments.
Right.
Um. We haven't ruled out having something depending on what happens next month.
They're, they're, they're supposed to be here at least through February.
Right, so that's what I, I talked to Mark and then Doug even called me, and I think Scott's gonna help me with this one, but. Um. Right now, the departments, I think, are gonna go together and at least get him some sort of a nice plaque from the departments. And kinda leave open, the open house thing to see how the rest of it goes.
I think that'd be great. What can we do for him?
I was thinking of some kind of like little book or something and we could all write something in it. And, you know. Pass, a fireman can pass it around and wheel.
Well, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just to express our appreciation, something like that would be good.
Yeah. Anybody that comes in here and wants to sign it.
Well, that'd be nice.
Key to the city.
He's, it's a huge loss. We're really.
Yes, it is.
Really bummed to see him go. Um. Does, does anybody know how long he's been the trustee? Cause I keep forgetting to ask him and I talk to him every day.
He was trustee when I moved here in ninety-four. So before that, you have an idea?
Long time.
I don't know. Is that something we could find out through the courthouse?
Maybe. I mean, I can just ask him. He'll tell me. I just, I just keep forgetting. Every time I see it, it's not been on my mind, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
But I do wanna do something for him. I do think he needs to go recognized, so.
That thing she's talking about would be nice.
Mm-hmm, yep. Okay, well, do some shopping, Carol. I'll give you the debit card. Um, as far as the rest of my office goes, I'm starting some year-end closeouts. Um. Figure out how to run this care's act money. Um, I did give you guys a list of meeting dates for. Twenty twenty-one. Everything looks good on that front. And, um, you can just need your nepotism stuff, so I have this in my folder. And.
Do we have two or do I just have?
You, everyone has two because one of them is involving direct line supervision employees and the other's involving contracts. So there are two separate ones. That's why you have to.
They look identical, but they're not quite.
But they're not quite. They're just a little bit different. Um.
Anybody gonna tell me what ward I am?
Well, there's a spot for it, Carol. Didn't you see that?
Well, you know, she's out in trouble with the eyes.
I'm five. He's one.
Uh.
That only leaves three. Turn her on the bulletin board.
There's a map on the bulletin board.
It's a map on the bulletin board in there.
We can look. Cause I don't know.
I do it at one time.
Um. But I think that's all I got.
Okay, we're going around the room again for public comments. Gretchen, Nikki.
I need a police report when you get.
Yeah, it's up there.
I'll get the cop. You can get a picture.
Nikki? Scott, Kevin. Clyde, Tony.
I have a question for Natalie.
Have a question?
Yes. Did, you said we need to discuss the truck thing? For when we're gonna have. Lots of snow.
Discuss what?
The truck.
The truck?
Yeah, as far as getting back.
Probably driving home. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. We talked about the office last week.
We talked about you having what? The town truck home?
Yes. When it was, when we were gonna have heavy snow.
Oh, I, did we talk about it? Cause I really honestly don't remember talking about it.
So that's something we, you said that's something we'll find need to talk about.
Oh, you probably, yeah, you guys probably need to make a decision if that's okay with you. Um. If, you know, it doesn't change anything on, you know.
Work has caused for over three inches.
I mean, you probably.
I'm just looking, knowing, knowing how the, like, Ditzler Road and the others all blow closed. Quick.
If you get the towel with truck with plow.
It'd be a lot easier to get over here to plow streets if I had that same at home.
Well.
At times when we know we're gonna have a lot against snow.
I know that when we were, when I was on council before, I know that Tom Spain asked us to take the truck home and we said no, because then if you take the truck home, then the truck and the snowplow are stuck there. And not here, so that's, I guess this is just a, a bridge to cross, but I know that is a conversation that we did have once before, so.
Right, if I'm stuck in a ditch swing here and there, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, but Tom started driving the truck home all the time.
With the plow and the spreader full and, you know.
Cause he could just do whatever he wanted. He did. So. Um, no, but it, Tony is right. It doesn't need to be, the situation doesn't need to be broomed. But I thought you were asking me about getting a new truck. I thought that's what we talked about the other day.
Well, we do. We probably need to think about that sometime in the future.
Yeah, if N V H wasn't cut so bad, yeah.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with it. And I'd say two inches and not three.
Okay.
Anything else? No?
Well, I had contact with the, our mowing person and it's four hundred. Um, each time he mows.
You did that while the meeting was going on?
I did.
She multitasked.
Multitasking. That's why I wasn't organized. But, um, he said he would drop it down to three seventy-five. We would lock it in for two years.
Well, you tell him to come up with the contract and we'll vote on it next month.
Alright.
You know, he did do a really nice job this year. I don't think we had any issues this year. I think it looked pretty good out there.
Yeah, it's cause he had my grandson working for him.
Oh, man, losing Brandon, isn't he?
That won't happen for long, I don't think. Okay, uh. Need a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
Somebody say something?
I did. Oh. Oh, like they were talking to themselves.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
To move and second to pay the bills as presented, anything under question? Hearing that? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Pose same sign, motion carried. Motion to adjourn, please?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Then move and second to adjourn till our next regular meeting, unless we have a special one? Anything under question? Home in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Pose same sign? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Kevin?